The Robotics Team Presentation. One fifty-four Renegade Robotics Team competes in First Tech Challenge. On Saturday, February fourth, the Barville Robotics Team competed against thirty-two other teams from across the state in the First Tech Challenge held at New England Institute of Technology Automotive Campus. Team earned a four-win and one-loss record. That sent them to the eliminations round. Renegade One Fifty-four won every round of the elimination matches and became the Rhode Island First Tech Challenge Champions. This victory celebrates the team's tenth win in its eleventh year existence. Renegade One Fifty-four has also won this competition more times than any other team in the state. Thank you, Mr. Holtrich and your team. Tonight, they're gonna give us a little example of what they do so well. Hi, guys. If you can do as much as you can up here, the camera's behind you. So we're okay to have you, we're okay to have you back, so that you can show the TV. We see some familiar faces from last year, and a lot of new ones.
And some new ones.
Dr. Pilar, School Committee members, thank you guys very much for having us. As you just mentioned, this is the eleventh year of the team, tenth state championship. We're, it's an amazing team this year. They've built an amazing robot, I'm really proud of it, I'm really proud of everything they've done this year. A lot of them are graduating, which is unfortunate, but I'm gonna find a way, obviously, to get it done. Former members of this team call me the Butchak of robotics, and it means a lot, thank you. So, this year's game, the kids are gonna talk about it, they'll go in in-depth detail on, you know, what their job was and different things, what they had to do, and then we'll put a little demonstration on for what the machine can do. It's a phenomenal machine, and I swear, I say this every time I'm up here to talk to you guys, it's one of the best things we've ever built, and yet again, it is. It's more complex, it's smarter, it's faster, it's, it's better than anything we've ever built. We just continue to improve upon our past knowledge and learn, and, and build better, more impressive machines. And that can't be done without your help, especially, you know, you know, we're a small group, and fundraising is really difficult for us to try to get the funds needed to run the organization. And you guys helping us out with the van rentals to get down to the competition in Scranton was a huge help, so thank you guys very much. This season totaled over four thousand dollars' worth of equipment we needed, not including transportation, so it means a lot, you know, and like, we have different fun, people that help us out. We have Friendly Nursing Home, they've given us a lot of money, they really help us out over there. Levy Rink, they've, they hook us up every year with a skate night, awesome, awesome help for us. And, you know, it's all things to help us keep doing what we do. And like I said, it's, it's this machine, this, this thing is incredible, I, I'm gonna hate to take it apart, but you, you need the components, so, you know, next, next season is gonna bring a whole different thing, and we'll see what we do then. And if you guys wanna talk about your roles and what you guys did on the, with the competition, well, yes.
Well, first off, thanks for having us, I really appreciate that. My name's Andrew Galfron, I'm the team captain and driver this year. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the game, this year's game is called Velocity Vortex. So what you have in front of you is the center scoring structure, and as well as a few of the scoring elements, so I'm gonna kinda go into that a little bit. So, the T-structure in front of you is alliance-based, so there's a blue and red alliance, and you score in your respective alliance's color. Each ball that passes through there during teleop mode is worth five points apiece. We averaged ten balls in each, so we scored fifty points just shooting. And then, on the floor or on the base of the structure is the catball, and that's an end game, lasts thirty seconds of the two-minute match. We can pick that up and put that on top of the blue spoke structure, and that's forty points at the end of the game. We also have an autonomous mode, which he will talk about in just two seconds.
Hi, everyone, my name is Dorian Latoyl, I'm the lead programmer on the team as well as the operator for the robot. So this year was a huge challenge for me, because I had to learn how to actually code this robot in Java. So, Java programming to me was an alien language, so to me, it was basically a really hard start to begin with. I had a co-programmer with me as well, his name is Gilbert, he's a freshman here, well, his actual name's Zach Long, but we've given him a nickname, Gilbert. But, what we had to do this year was try to get our robot to not only drive and score points during the driver period, but actually drive itself around on its own, the name of the autonomous map, the match. So what we had to do this time around was actually take our robot and try to score a hundred points, one of the biggest scores in the game. We would actually go for these wheels on the side here, these blue wheels that are 3D-printed. These wheels would actually deploy in the very beginning of the match, these are the very first thirty seconds, and then drive towards a wall adjacent to the twelve-foot wall on the side. When the robot went to drive into this wall, it would actually line itself up against the wall and drive along it. This would actually help us out, because what we, we had before was actually rangefinders, and what this would do is tell our robot how far off the wall it was. The issue was with these is that it was very sensitive, making it shift left and right, and was very inaccurate, but this new mechanical advantage to our system allowed to be much more accurate. We'd actually score two beacons using the 3D-printed hands on the side here. You guys wanna show off the hands to them? Above one of the hands that you see is a little black device, that's a light, LED sensor. So these beacons would read red or blue, and based on what's cyber on, if for this case it would be blue, we'd actually have to choose the blue beacon, and the colors are randomized, so I had to write in the code if it senses blue, which arm to move. And then this robot would also have to sense a white line on the bottom of the, the field map. So when the white line was red, the robot would drive up to it, stop, and then sense the beacons. And then go for the other beacon on the other side of the field and do the exact same thing. This would get us up to, I believe, sixty points at this point, and then we would actually have two balls loaded into the robot itself, turn around and shoot into the blue field, for this case, for a blue team. The center goal would get shot, two balls, and would get us fifteen points each, and it's a total of ninety points. The last part of the, the program itself was to actually turn, drive forward, and knock that catball from its position. We park on the center vortex, and that's a hundred points. So getting this code to work took me many, many hours after school, but to see it actually work in the end was an amazing experience. And the teleop itself, getting to work along with my team captain here, Andrew, on the field is an amazing thing as well, getting to see this robot perform and basically get to program it to life. You get to actually create something quite amazing with this robot when you do coding, and they get to build the body, and it's just an absolutely amazing experience. I couldn't be more proud of my team.
Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Hi, guys, my name is Paige Justardin, and I'm the team manager of the team. So my job is basically like the team secretary. So our, one of the requirements of our competition is we have to create something called the Engineering Notebook that documents our whole process as we build the robot, on top of our financial plans, our sustainability plans, and our CAD drawings, which Antonio will go over later. So basically, this year, my job was to construct our two-hundred-page notebook containing entries from every day of what everyone did, with pictures of what everyone did, and compile all that, as well as plan out our budget, getting us sponsorships, and like various other things of that nature.
They have to leave there in the van, they must. They have rehearsal right now, they gotta run.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
So, I'm Antonio Row, as Paige stated, I'm the second SolidWorks engineer, or first SolidWorks engineer has worked, so he couldn't be here. But, so pretty much what we do is we take that robot design, and we actually, the 3D-printed parts, like the wheels and the hands and the phone case, we designed that up for that to be printed, but the robot design itself, we take it and we draw up all the individual pieces on SolidWorks, and we put them in their own sub-assemblies, and then we create the whole robot itself on the 3D software, SolidWorks, which we just got, after the season ended, we got a sponsorship for SolidWorks. So we put it all together in there, and then we add further stress tests to it and whatnot, just to give a accurate representation of what the robot pieces would be like under real-life scenarios. And this year, we got our sixth PTC First Place Design Award, and that's six out of eleven, that's more, more than any other team in the state as well. So we have a very good SolidWorks and engineering background on the team.
Excellent. Very proud of you.
So now they're gonna demonstrate what the robot's capabilities are, hopefully it all works. Should. So they would drive around in the fields, collecting those balls. You would start with three balls, but then if you hit those beacons, like Dorian had mentioned, you get an extra two, so there's not a lot of things to pick up and shoot. Maybe accidentally drop one. And then he would line up for the, the shoot on that target there. Oop, a little off. Do you wanna do a couple more shots? Did you just spot him on it? There you go. There you go. Oop.
Alright.
Alright, now watch you play in-game. Now at the very end of the game, this was, we had thirty seconds to perform what you're about to see here. Had to open up this grabber, grab a hold of that ball. Got it. Go for it. Angle her up.
Oh, wow.
This whole machine has the fit inside of an eighteen-inch cube at the start of the match, and can expand to any size you see fit. And, well, this thing stands over five feet tall. So we did that better than any other, other team in Rhode Island, we won our tenth state championship. Amazing team, amazing robot, it's just, it performs well, we, they perform well. Really proud of them, really excited what they do every year. And you can see here, this machine is, is quite impressive, you know, and they built it all themselves, they're high school kids, they're building this, it's awesome. You know, it's really good.
Really impressed, really impressed.
Well, thank you, thank you guys very much for your time. We're always proud to come here to show off what we've done, always proud of the demo for you guys, so, and again, thank you guys for your support and helping us keep going.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are your trophies? Oh, how nice. Oh, nice. Very nice. I know. I'm always very, very impressed with what you do. You did a great job.
Oh, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, nice job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Remember when I used to use SolidWorks? Disaster. Disaster. I don't have to go any further than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My god, that's impressive.
Well, Day One, that's a hard act to follow. If you don't mind, you... Justin, are we on?
So right now, we're making a local recording. The issue seems to be with the YouTube API saying that we've exceeded our quota for today, which is impossible, because I'm the only one who does this, and we only do it once a month. So what we'll do is we'll just upload it.
Alright. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Day One.
Okay, good evening, thank you for having us back, it's been about a year. For those of you who might not have been here, I believe everyone will see the last term, but my name's Sandy Malone, I'm the Director of Prevention and Training at Day One, and...
Yep, my name is Dr. Lindsay Orchowski, I'm a clinical psychologist at the Alpert Medical School of Brown University.
So the program that we're working on is a middle-school program, I don't know if you want us to go, if you have any questions about that, but I know the last time, the questions were basically around the survey, and we finally got it, it was a long process for a whole lot of reasons, but it finally got Department of Education approval, so we're all set to go, I think you all should have a copy. If you have any questions about the survey, or the implementation of the program, or any questions, I don't know how much more information, I don't wanna go over everything if you don't want us to.
There were some changes that you made. Can I sound on those?
Yeah, certainly, so the Department of Education recommended about fifty items be deleted from the survey, we accommodated all of those requests. We feel that the survey now is going to be administered in two shorter time periods, which would be more developmentally appropriate. And so we're pleased with the final product, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention also believes that the final product of the survey is going to meet the goals of the funding opportunity, so we've, we're very pleased with the final product and how it's come about.
I was very pleased at the changes. Very nice.
It seems that most of the changes that were made were exactly the ones that this committee had concerns about. So, it looks good, it's, it's a, just a, just another one to present our children with, but I think it's important for the school, for the state, for the kids, so. Anyone else have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Hearing none, Dr. Pilata, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you so much for your work.
Yeah, I think you need a motion. Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
We'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve the Day One survey.
Second.
Motion to second, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, public comment. Hearing none. Personnel, appointments, leaves of absence, retirements, resignations.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the following retirements with regret. Elaine Landry, Lead Custodian at Callahan, effective May first, two thousand and seventeen. Moira Cameron, World Language Teacher at Barville High School, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Sally Marslick, Science at the Middle School, effective August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Muriel Colget, Teacher Assistant at the Middle School, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen. And Deborah Simone, World Language Teacher at Barville High School, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none.
I ju, I hope they all enjoy their retirements, many teachers on this list I had as a student, so they're wonderful teachers, wonderful people, and these retirements are definitely deserved, so.
Best wishes.
Best wishes, for sure.
Happy and healthy.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resignation of Diana McPherson, School Nurse Teacher at the Middle School, effective April twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to, a motion to approve the appointments. Erica Plant, ESY Coordinator, two thousand sixteen-seventeen Program, thirty-five hundred dollars. Scott Reguaire, Lead Custodian, ATL, effective immediately.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a, a motion to approve the athletic appointments. Michael Boyd, Golf Assistant at the High School, is a volunteer, and Rebecca Carvahalo, Fast Pitch Softball Assistant at the High School, volunteer.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Also, I'd like to make a motion to approve a leave of absent Catherine Lord, Principal at the Middle School, honor of about eight seven, eighteen-seventeen through twelve-eleven-seventeen.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, old business, fiscal year seventeen, BSD, Budget Update.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Fiscal year seventeen, Rink, Budget Update.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the motion, receive and file. Motion to second, any questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, travel policy, P five-two-five-one-point-one-three, first reading.
Motion to approve the travel policy, P five-two-five-one-point-three-one, first reading, and dispense with reading.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Sylvia?
I still would like to see something about travel distance, where it says, with the approval of the superintendent, and it may be within that paragraph, with travel distance a consideration.
There is a, excuse me. I think there is, within an hour.
It's in there?
It's in there. If it's within an hour's drive.
I think when you...
I'm sorry.
It, it's an hour to Boston, for example. But if, if the conference starts at eight o'clock in the morning, and there's a weather condition, that would be very difficult for that individual to get there at that time. So it would be at the discretion of the superintendent to make a decision whether or not that individual should stay the night before, particularly if there's an advance notice of a weather condition. What's associated with that is sometimes we have to pay upfront, many times, the pre-conference costs. So we, we certainly don't want the individual not attending when we're, when we're gonna pay the conference upfront. So, that's why I put that at the discretion of the superintendent. It's, it's a, it's a very tenuous situation to try to put the timeline in there, for that reason.
That's not what I'm looking at, as far as that, I just put with travel distance a consideration, so that the next superintendent will use that as a little notice that maybe we need to look at the distance.
Right, anyone else, we have a motion to second, that's a discussion, does anyone else have a question?
I think, well, I, I personally think that with the superintendent's approval, whether it be Dr. Pilata or the next superintendent, they will approve according to travel conditions, not mileage. If the, if, if we're, they're talking about a, a snowstorm that is going to hinder transportation, whether it be just to Providence or to Boston, that it should be taken into consideration, because tra, travel can be extremely hazardous, whether it be snow or ice or...
Anyone else?
And I think the superintendent would look at both of those things. So I think if, as long as it says with the approval of the superintendent, I think he or she would take all of those things into consideration. So I'm just nervous if we put that specific language, that we would kinda make ourselves stuck.
No, it just says consideration.
The other thing I would just add...
Sorry.
That's okay.
I was just gonna say, I think with that, that language, with the approval of the superintendent, as long as it gets on his or her desk, and they approve it, I think we are safe in that regard, that's just my opinion. I don't think we need that specific language. That's just...
I agree.
You still have the floor, do you have anything else to say?
I don't.
Okay. Dr. Pilata?
Yeah, the only other thing I would add to is sometimes our people conduct the conferences, or professional development, and or present conference material, even, even if it was held, for example, like at the Crown Plaza, and there was a weather condition, if that person wasn't able to get there, then that particular portion of the conference doesn't take place. So there's a lot of different situations that arise, that's why I kinda left that open at the discretion of the superintendent. I understand what you're saying, but I, there's, there's just, just too many variables that play into restricting it.
I thought I left it open enough.
Okay. Alright, so is there any further discussion? Have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With, can you repeat what the, what the motion is right now?
To accept it as, as it is.
To accept it as is?
As, as it's presented.
Thank you.
Motion, second, all in favor? Joshua?
Aye.
Aye.
Sylvia? Aye.
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 Next item, Superintendent's Report.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
I think great. Item nine, Administrator's Reports.
A, a motion to approve or accept the Administrator's Reports with thanks, and again, the thanks for the job's well done, barring any questions from the committee.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Yes?
Um, I just wanted to congratulate the High School Theater Program on their spring produ, production over the weekend. I was unable to attend, but I think we all had received a lovely email written by the president or the, the director of the play, and I heard it was well-attended, everyone was so impressed, and there was hundreds of people there. So I know this group of students has worked really hard in improving the theater program, so I just wanted to congratulate them on a job well done. And enjoy April vacation, next week. Have a safe, happy vacation.
Can I say something? I know I did go to the, to the presentation and found it very entertaining. And I did send a letter to Kathleen, just saying how wonderful, Kathleen and company, saying how wonderful the presentation was. And I work at P-Pac and haven't seen, and it was just as entertaining as some of the original Broadway shows that I've seen.
Awesome.
And I've seen six of the ones that they'd seen, that they put in, and it was wonderful.
Right.
Thank you very much. Vote, okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
We do.
We have discussed it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get lost on that. What's at school?
Sick Bank.
Right, Subcommittee, Sick Bank Committee.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Sick Bank Committee met on March twenty-second. Thirty days were granted to a certified staff member, and thirty days were denied to a certified staff member. And then the Sick Bank Committee met again on April fourth, and thirty days were granted to a non-certified staff member.
So, motion received by... Thank you. Item eleven, Correspondence Communications. First item, vote, resolution, gun-free schools. Dr. Pilata, could you accept it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is the legislation that the, the school committee voted on last year to approve. So it's being resubmitted again this year, asking school committees across the state to approve this resolution and send it on to the Rhode Island School Committee Association, who will then make a presentation to the to the Subcommittee handling this legislation, opposing the current legislation.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for gun-free schools, as it is presented. Second.
Have a motion in the second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Are you opposed?
I, I'm opposing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't say aye with me.
That's because I was reading something, and I wasn't paying attention. Terribly sorry about that. I have one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else on the Correspondence Communications? I have just a couple things. Congratulations to our Boys and Girls Basketball Teams for winning, uh, the following sportsmanship award. The girls won the Brightman-Baldman Sportsmanship Award for Rhode Island Girls Basketball. And the boys run, won the Rhode Island Athletics League Sportsmanship Team, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, Division Three. Great job to both of those. Anyone else?
Yes, I did. I, I received in the mail today, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, the two thousand seventeen annual meeting. I think everybody received it. Um, it's gonna be May sixth at the Crown Plaza. Looks like it has a very interesting, um, agenda.
It does. It always is. Always is. And I have one more communication for the, um, for the Girls Basketball Coaching Staff and Players. This was a letter sent by a coach from another district, and, uh, this head coach wanted to express his appreciation and admiration of our girls basketball coaching staff and players. At the statewide banquet last week, the girls basketball team won the Rhode Island Basketball Officials' Sportsmanship Award for the twenty-sixteen-seventeen season. Your girls basketball team, under the direction of Coach Stanton, have represented Barville High School and the Barville community with class and dignity. Uh, he also wanted to point out that the Coaches Association awarded Caitlin Libby the Alice Sullivan Scholarship Award, and that came with a five-hundred-dollar check that she was given that night. Anyone else, Correspondence Communication? Alright, item twelve, new business, DECA request.
Chairman, make a motion that we donate five-hundred dollars to our great winners of our DECA program. So, we donate, uh, we give them five-hundred dollars to help them with their expenses.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Homeschool application.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirteen, Committee on Agenda Items. Anyone? Hearing none.
Happy vacation. Hope the weather, uh, cooperates.
Seems like it will. Item fourteen, Pending Issues. Fieldhouse renovation dedication?
Uh, yeah, nothing yet on that.
Staff appreciation night?
No, I have to, uh, we'll be discussing that with Dr.
School bus employees appreciation.
Same thing.
Okay. Item fifteen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Easter, everyone.
Happy Easter, everyone.
Happy Easter is right.